I brought beer. Me like the fair, a lot of drinks and beer. And my laptop battery is already down to sixteen percent. This thing has taken about eight years. Yeah, ever since I became a reporter.
All three in order, will those attendants please rise, join us for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome all of our friends and neighbors and colleagues in joining us in this regularly scheduled October third, twenty twenty-two city council meeting. Uh, as you come in tonight, what would be to my right, which would be to all of your left, there's a desk in the door. Right when you walk in, there's a sign in sheet. If you're a guest with us tonight, would you please sign in? City clerk, can I have a roll call?
Councilperson Soha.
Present.
Brainer.
Here.
Beer.
Here.
Morrissey.
Here.
Sher.
Here.
Stuccio.
Here.
Pratt.
Here.
Zizer.
Here.
Mayor Stockford.
Here.
All present here.
Thank you, Katie. We will move into approval of agenda. City manager, any members of council have any changes to make to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So, support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Beer, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move on to public comment on agenda items only. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. And please ensure if you're just speaking on anything tonight that it has a direct tie to something that's present on the agenda. If you're here to speak about the special assessment district, the Westwood project, please wait until the public hearings, which is under introduction and adoption of ordinances, public hearing, you will have an opportunity at that time to speak on that subject. So, anything else that's on the agenda, the podium is now open.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Alan Russell. I want to speak to the agenda item referring to, uh, two four five west mechanic and the tax abatement. Um, first off, I'd like to thank, uh, Kelly La Presto. She's an asset to the city of, uh, Hillsdale. I appreciate her reaching out to me. She's always, uh, been a very, uh, great resource and, uh, you know, kudos to her. So this is regarding the, um, sale of my building and therefore the, uh, suspension of the tax abatement that I got approved for some four years ago. I'm going to use round numbers and figures just for time's sake, but, um, I wish I wouldn't have signed up for the abatement because it really serves me no purpose other than to, uh, cost me more in property taxes. I bought a building with some assumptions that it had heat and, um, a usable office space, which it did not. We had to completely gut it and, uh, we had to put significant amount of capital into making the building functional. Um, so I thought that those things were some of the assumptions for the baseline of the um, SE, SEV on the, uh, taxable, uh, you know, the taxable, um, uh, amount of the property is, uh, you know, the last eight years, the value of the property has been relatively the same, the taxable value. And, um, I get a bill for my summer taxes, for instance, my twenty twenty-one bill, um, based on that uh, pretty standard SEV over the last eight years. Uh, but I also get due to the tax abatement program on part of an additional bill that I get a fifty percent discount on, um, due to all the improvements I made to the property. Um, I have since sold the property. The new owner, uh, has not responded to continuing this abatement. And so therefore, because I believe it was a ten-year agreement, I'm required to now pay the back um, discount, which I don't, you know, believe is really a discount, but that's neither here nor there. It was a poor decision on my part to take part in this. Um, I sold the building for almost double the value, you know, double the price that, uh, I bought it for, thus raising that baseline taxable value. So for the future, um, the new owner will pay a higher rate. So I feel like, you know, I know it's at the mercy of you folks, but I've brought value to the property. I've paid what I think is my fair share and the new owner will pay a higher value moving forward. So I just ask that you consider that the city will receive more property tax monies than it would have had I not made these improvements and, uh, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Any more public comment on agenda items?
I'd like to comment on the domestic also. For, um, domestic harmony. I've seen a lot of publicity about it in the paper and stuff. It mentions a lot about women, which I understand the majority of those probably are women, but it's not a sexual thing. Domestic violence affects everybody. And I think that should be even to the LGBTQ partners. It also affects them also. So that should be also understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Any more public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, we're going to close the podium. We're going to move into the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we've got approval of bills, city and BPU claims of September first, twenty twenty-two, payroll of September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, city council minutes of September nineteenth, special Olympic area twenty-nine street use agreement, five K twilight twinkle. That sounds lovely, like a lovely event. Um, then twenty twenty-two Hillsdale College homecoming street use agreement. Any discussion on any of the items in the consent agenda tonight? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt. Can I please have a roll call?
Councilperson Brainer.
Yes.
To Beer.
Yes.
Morrissey.
Yes.
Sher.
Yes.
Stuccio.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Zizer.
Yes.
Mayor Stockford.
Yes.
Councilperson Soha.
Yes.
All approved.
Thank you, Katie. We'll move on to communications petitions. First item is leave and brush collection notice. Everybody's going to want to hear this. Uh, city crews will collect brush curbside from each city residence one time only in the month of October. Have brush out to the curb by seven AM, Monday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Jason, are we going to do this by wards?
No, no, sir. We're going to start on the south end and just work our way counterclockwise clockwise through the whole city.
Okay. You guys hear that? They're going to start on the south end and then they're going to make their way counterclockwise around the city. And that will start October seventeenth, which is two weeks from today. So if you want your brush picked up. Uh, item B Mitchell Research Center, September twenty twenty-two newsletter. And this is really nice. It's got some history about the fair in here, which I think is very relevant. Uh, item C Kiefer House Hotel Construction Update. There's an update on the Kiefer House. Mr. Mackey from Brandt, did you have something to add to this, Dave?
No, sir.
Okay. So just says they're making physical pro- progress on the Kiefer House. This project remains fully funded even as we incur significant cost increases in materials and supplies. Um, while physical work appears to have slowed down, we've made great progress in ordering materials, equipment, finishes and firm machines to mitigate supply delays and cost increases. Item D is reading emergency unit letter. I encourage everybody to read that. Item E is Hillsdale Hospital Pregnancy and Infant Lost Remembrance Walk. Believe this is the third year that they've held, fifteenth annual? Well, excuse me. Fifteenth annual, and this is Sunday, October sixteenth at one PM. The walk starts, um, at Owens Park Pavilion out of Bob's. So I would encourage people to get involved in that. Item F is City of Hillsdale Trick or Treating. Is that something we want to discuss?
It just sets the, the time from six PM to eight PM on October thirty-first.
Okay. Well, it's a resolution. Don't we need to vote on it?
It's an old resolution, past years ago, just establishing that and we've used that since.
Okay, so trick or treating is just the same as it always has been every year. And then item G is special assessment district letters. There's a number of letters in here. One is from, uh, Ben Coffberg, Reverend Ben Coffberg, and it's in favor of the special assessment district. Here we've got uh, one from Sarah and Jim Eckert. They are also in favor of it. Oh, there's a number of them in here. I'm not going to read through every one of them. Any discussion on any of the items in communications petitions? Seeing none, we'll move on. Yes, sir.
I just, I, if I remember correctly, I think there were five in favor and one against that were part of the packing.
Thank you, Councilman Soha. Any more discussion on any of the items in communications petitions? Dave?
Uh, Mayor, when, when we get to the public hearing, there are, we have received a number of la- uh, letters prior to the meeting, so, um, there's an, uh,
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Any more discussion on any of the items in communications petitions? Seeing none, we will move on to introduction and adoption of ordinances, public hearing. Item A, public hearing, special assessment district, twenty twenty-three oh seven. Kristen. We're opening the public hearing now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, as you are aware, we're in the process of trying to get the roads, uh, per your top goal in the city to upgrade the road system within the city of Hillsdale. So as part of this, last year, we started special assessment projects. We've been six, we have had two that are, one's under construction right now. We had one up in the northeast portion of town. It was very successful last year. So in line with that, we are now working on the project for twenty twenty-three. Um, currently, this project is being designed out of house because it's a quite substantial project. This project includes road reconstruction, um, water, modern main, sanitary sewer main and new stormwater uh, product, uh, main on the Cold Springs Westwood area going down to the railroad. Um, the estimate right now on this project is around six point five million dollars. That's for everything encompassed in the project, including utilities. But with regard to what is included in the special assessment district, we do not charge in the special assessment district for water and wastewater because the costs are in rates for renewing, rehabilitating those services are in the utility rates. So we back those out. So the cost for the special assessment portion of this project is two point six eight million. Of that, we, the city will be covering two point two six million and the special assessment district will be four hundred and twenty thousand and some change. That works to a split of about eighty-four percent of the city's paying, sixteen percent of the special, uh, special assessment monies will be covering on the project. Uh, we expect this project to run pretty much all of next year from April all the way to October when we can pave. Um, it's hard to tell you right now where we will be at any given time. I envision that this will be a contractor that's quite substantial in size and personnel. So like uh, out of Jackson, kind of zoo area, I would expect those would be the kind of contractors that will be bidding this job. Um, that being said, it's very possible we'll be working in multiple areas of the project doing sewer, sanitary, stormwater in any given time because until we get the underground utilities in, we can't address the street and curb and all that, all those items. So that, those will be the first things we work on are the sanitary sewer, the water and the storm sewer. Um, all that being said, um, the schedule, you know, until we bid and until we sit down with the, uh, the successful little bidder or contractor, at that point in time, we will sit down and come up with a definitive schedule for when things will be done. Obviously, we're very, uh, cognizant of, you know, past projects and how, you know, we don't want to tear everything up and leave it in disrepair. But the fact of the matter is it's a very substantially sized project. It is going to be a headache for those living in the area. I won't disagree with that, but in the end, we will have new water main, which has been a problem up in that area. Uh, sanitary sewer that has holes in it, uh, from our videos, uh, storm sewer issues that have never been addressed and we will be addressing those. So it will be a nice complete project when we're done. I think those are the highlights of what I have to say. Do you have any questions?
Council, any? Council has questions for Kristen while she's at the podium. Council mature.
You're guaranteeing possibly it'll be done in October?
I will not guarantee that. And the reason I won't is because I'm hearing on the street that supply chain issues with regard to some of the materials we may need to do some of the underground utility work may be a six-month-long lead item.
Okay, the biggest concern I have when I talk to the residents up there, they do not want to rip on it.
I totally understand that. And like I said, I'm very cognizant of that fact. But we won't be putting shovels in the ground until materials are here. So I can tell you, we won't start underground work. If, if we bid this job in January, find out we have a six-month lead, our start time won't start till then. Um, we talked today about some things we can do, uh, to try to mitigate that, but, um, I cannot guarantee. I will make every effort to have this project started and done in the same year or at least leave it in a passable, not ripon state in subs- over the winter.
Cause I don't know, they suffer enough of the condition that road is, uh, up there. And I do not want to have a winter where the ripon nightmare is repeated again. That's my concern.
Yep, totally understand and we're very cognizant of that, but because of what I'm hearing on the street with regard to, I mean, fire hydrants are six weeks out, um, actual main can be six months. We, we are leaving the contract open that material that they, they can provide either plastic or ductile iron. So it's very possible that we'll get whatever material is most readily available. It's a pretty, you know, and, and I just don't know where that's going to be with regard to the materials we need. I'm most concerned about the water main work and those materials because that's what I'm hearing with all the lead service line stuff and all of the A R, A R P money, earth money that's out there, a lot of municipalities and contractors are doing lots of work. So it's a short supply. So, but I, I honestly, until we put a bid out and get a bid back, contractors won't put in orders for those materials. So I can't answer that question individually today. But I will say, I won't allow the contractor to put shovels in the ground and leave it in a state that's not passable or amenable. Um, and we will do our very best to be done. I don't, I, I mean, I don't really know.
You can't predict the future, I'm just saying.
No, and I, you know, and I hate to say that. I, you know, if this was, if this was this time last year, I would tell you, we wouldn't have any problem. And we're going to, we're going to hit our deadlines on our projects we're doing now. And I didn't have any material issues there. But we're a whole nother year in the, into the, all these monies and infrastructure things going on all over the country.
I, I think we should be clear too, um, with the audience that ripon was five years ago. Um, we've had a dozen big projects since then. That was the first of our street construction since then. Um, we've hired a city engineer, which we didn't have when we started that project. Uh, we've also, um, you know, we made a lot of mistakes from during ripon and it was a learning experience and we haven't duplicated those mistakes since then. So I just want to allay people's fears. Yes, sir.
I'm not arguing that point. I just wanted to assure them that when I talked to them, I said this wouldn't happen on my word. Uh, but obviously the supply problem is an issue here. And we're going to make sure that we don't do this unless we know we can get it completed at a rapid, easy time. Cause I do not want to put them through the hell they've been through already up there.
Yep.
I mean, it's a third world world up there and they deserve better.
Totally, yeah. We totally understa- I totally understand, you know, we're going forward with that, you know, is, is constantly at the top of our decision-making list as to how we do this. So when we sit down with our little better contractor, we will have those discussions and say, how do we stage these projects such that we don't, don't have anything open? I mean, if we get part of the main, we can do sections. I mean, you can very easily break this work up. But we will, we will have to figure that out.
Thank you, Kristen. Councilman Stuccio?
Yeah, this is probably not a fair question either, but I can only assume that the cost will go up if we delay this project. I mean, if it gets delayed. Do you have any, uh, educated guess how many percentage points that would go up?
Well, I can tell you based on the, the project we did last year and the project we have going right now, the cost of my asphalt last year was sixty-four dollars a ton. I'm paying a hundred and thirteen dollars a ton right now. And asphalt is an, is a, is a concrete or a gas byproduct. So it's in, in contractors and suppliers from back in twenty-ten, they held all their prices and they got burned in subsequent years because they didn't raise their prices. They're not going to get burned like that again. So right now we're looking at a hundred dollars a ton for asphalt. Um, it's supply and demand. So the cost of materials are going up and it's an unfortunate part of the business. It doesn't change, it, I, I need to say though, it changes what the city's going to pay. It will not change the assessments. Assessments are, are topped out at five thousand and that, those impacts will only affect the city budget.
Thank you, Kristen. Any more, Councilman Soha?
Hi, um, thank you for your work on this, but if the assessment doesn't pass, will the sewer, will that work still be done?
We will have to meet as a team to see. The water main is in very poor condition. It's very possible we would do that, but that will not yield paving of the street. Most of that, most of the new water main is going to be under the grass.
Okay.
So we would just come through, do that work and leave the street the way it is. But we have not met as a team to decide between the utility department and us as to what we would do.
Thank you, Kristen. Any more questions for Kristen?
I'm sure there's a whole bunch of you.
Sure. Folks, how many of you, uh, here tonight live in, uh, special assessment district? How many came here in favor of the project? How many came here opposed to the project? If you were told today that there's no way your street's going to get done if the project doesn't get passed trees, are you all still okay with the, uh, special assessment failing? Can I see a rap- uh, show of hands for that? If honestly speaking, if the assessment fails, your street doesn't get done, are you guys okay with that? Okay. Can you, uh, can you guys raise your hands on that one? Who is still okay with the assessment not passing if if the line in the sand is your street doesn't get done?
Will you repeat that, please?
I don't, I'm sorry. I don't know if I'm phrasing it very well.
If the special assessment district doesn't pass, your road will not be reconstructed. That's the line in the sand. So what the mayor wants to know is do you still say you don't want the special assessment district to go forth? Correct?
Are we allowed to speak?
In just a moment. I'm sorry. So at this time, we're going to open, we will open the podium. Uh, please limit your comments to three minutes. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. Uh, and of course, because it's public hearing, you can only speak on the special assessment district. And I'm going to be very strict about keeping the hold on the three-minute, uh, time. And I'm sorry for that. If I seem abrupt and ask you to leave the podium, it is not disrespect towards you. Uh, you're, all of our bosses up here, it's just that if I let one person go past three minutes, then it's not fair to the next person if they want to go past three minutes. So we're going to hold very strictly to a three-minute time limit. The podium's now open.
Hi, I'm a, Garrett Wolfman. I live on Three Corne Court. Um, and, uh, I believe that there is no other way to get our streets fixed than this special assessment district. And our, 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 um, houses will go up in value if the roads are fixed. It'll be easier to sell the property if the roads are fixed. Um, and the, the reason that the road didn't get fixed is not because we just didn't have a very good city government. I just want to give you just a little bit of information. Uh, I published a little article in twenty seventeen on this, but, um, two big things happened. Revenue share in two thousand eight, revenue sharing, statutory revenue sharing from the state government collapsed. Um, and, uh, the domestic, the statutory, uh, revenue sharing went from six hundred and eighty-four million in fiscal year two thousand one down to two hundred and forty-nine million in fiscal year twenty sixteen, which was the last that I had. And that's in nominal dollars. So see the revenue sharing that, that we were using to fix the roads and, and that's really what a lot of the revenue sharing went in. That declined dramatically. Um, in addition, proposal A had some unintended consequences. When it passed in nineteen ninety-three, the, the idea is that your taxable value can't go up by more than five percent of the rate of inflation, whichever is, whichever is less. Okay? So we weren't thinking you were going to get this dramatic drop in property values, which we did in two thousand eight. We should have probably put in the language, if you have a, uh, a decline in property values, it can go up to get you to back to where you were, but it didn't. So what happens is you get this substantial drop in property values, which the city uses to fix the roads. And it goes, um, actually I, I got some numbers. Um, it was, uh, the taxable value, statewide taxable value was, uh, three hundred and sixty-three billion in two thousand eight. It didn't hit that number again until twenty nineteen and that's nominal dollars. So taxable values, which you guys can use to use stuff, is, was lower in, in twenty nineteen than it was in two thousand eight. And in twenty twenty-one, it was three hundred and ninety-one billion dollars. Is, that's the latest numbers for, uh, Tom bigger twenty twenty-one. That means it went up twenty, twenty-eight billion. That means it went up twenty, twenty-eight billion dollars in nominal dollars over thirteen years. So really what is, really what is the problem is that you really need more revenue sharing. And that is what resulted because if you are the city council, you gotta pay the police, you gotta pay the fire. And what you can do is you can delay infrastructure. So for that, I'll say I'm really for this because you guys are paying eighty percent of it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Any more public comment?
Hello, I'm Greg Kurtz. I live in 151 Westwood Drive. I've been here a few times over the last few years about the street situation up there. And it's time to do something. I'm in favor of the special assessment. Nobody likes to pay extra taxes and money, but man, all the water main breaks we've had up there. And, you know, every time I drive on my driveway, it's like, you know, there's potholes. It's just ridiculous. And the only thing the city has done, they bring the patch up, the cold patch, throw it in there and it's gone in two weeks. And I have an eight-year-old granddaughter and I don't even like her to ride her bike on that street. I mean, it's, you know, she got an accident for all of her bike because of all of the pavement problems. And it's time to bite the bullet and if we don't do it, I've said before when I'm up there, are we just going to let it go? And it seems to me that's what's going to happen. We're not, not gonna have anything done if the assessment doesn't pass. And it's just gonna keep getting worse and worse. And it's time to, time to fix it.
Thank you, Greg.
Good evening. My name's Kimberly Moore and I'm 168 Westwood Drive. So I'm on the downhill and I really enjoy a great deal of water at my property. We're literally currently digging to China. Oh, thanks, Grant. Good timing. That's my dig to China over, guy over there. Can I ask you a question? I'm sorry, can you remind me of your name?
Kristin.
Kristin. So I walked around the project that was done over off of State Street there on the way out to the fishing ponds, because I know those roads were exceedingly bad over there and they were ripped down a couple of years ago, I think. I don't know how much issue they had with water, with drainage when it rains. But that's a very big issue where we are, of course. And I'm curious, can you kind of address maybe the difference between those two projects? I noticed that there are existing drains there, but they're, they're like the old ones that were there before they repaved. And I don't know how much they were dealing with water out there, but where we are, I, we don't have any drains there. And I have literally pumped a thousand gallons in a matter of a couple of hours out of my basement in my house. Again, I'm on the downhill, but I'm curious.
Towards, yeah, near spring.
Going towards spring.
Okay.
Yes, which has nothing to do with the season, obviously. I didn't pay attention to that when I bought my house.
Well, we are, we are, we are looking, I mean, that area where you don't have, there are storms that was already there. They exist on the corner of Picardi and Westwood. There are storm in left basins and a lot of that stuff goes rear lot. So there are storm drains. We'll have to verify that those are working. We don't have any plans to do stormwater work in that area. There are a lot of underground springs that I pulled in that area.
Yes, there are.
Our, our Director of Public Services is very aware of that. We're aware of all the running water in the, in the rear lots and stuff. It's not a whole lot we can do about underground springs. We are going to put, I will have to double check our drawings. We are looking to put some under drains in, which will tie into those bases to try to help the situation. But truth be told, on that end of the project, we don't have plans to reconstruct the existing stormwater. But we will vet the current stormwater system, make sure it's all functional and there's no holes or issues with it.
Okay, because where I am, there's zip out. So the curb, which isn't really a curb, the sidewalk also, it just becomes an absolute river of water. So there's no intention in this project then to actually add any further?
Not storm, not stormwater in that area. Where's, where is what, the 168 on which side is?
So I'm on the west side of the street. I'm three houses from spring as you're going up the hill, so it's down to right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
There, the structures are across the street from you. And I believe there's some down at the bottom of the hill. Is there some intermediate on the hill there?
Yeah.
No, there aren't.
Okay. I'll take a look at it, see what our, what our engineers got. I mean, we could very possibly put in another structure on that side to take the water. But we are putting a new curb and gutter. And the curb and gutter that's there is what they call a rolled curb. It's not a normal six-inch, what we're putting back will be a normal six-inch back, which will help try to keep that water flowing in the road rather than on up driveways and all that.
I will, I will say, years ago, we did do a, where we upsized the pipe in the backyards there. We ran into a lot of groundwater in there as well.
Guys, we gotta ask in the quorum, there has to be some decorum. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So I will take a look at it and see what we can do.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Because the water that comes up on the sidewalk actually doesn't even come from the street. It's literally just like a second gutter of water will be flowing. It's, it's quite remarkable, actually. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
Good evening. My name's Jeremiah Regan. I live on 36 Glendale. I appreciate that the problems with roads were inherited. They're not caused by you. They predate the head of the amendment. They predate proposal A. I'm not sure we've been told the full story, though. And I'm, I don't do this full-time. I've only been researching this since I got my letter. So if I'm providing incorrect information, I'd be happy to be correct. But there are ways to override the Prop A limits on tax increases for general fundraising. And our city charter, section 8.2, has a similar override that allows the city to raise funds for roads. That's difficult to do, no doubt. From the city's perspective, it's much easier to impose a massive tax on eighty-eight households, a tax that can only be struck down by a fifty percent citizen vote, and then can still be imposed if seven, nine council members vote for it. It's easier to pass that than to get the citizens of an entire city to agree to a moderate tax increase for the good of all. The city could, of course, cut funding down budget items. This, of course, is what they should do. Roads are communal goods. They should not be paid for through unequal taxes imposed on the few. Unless we wish to remain a perpetually dysfunctional city, we need to make a change in the way we handle our budgets. That means hard decisions. I understand that. I'm asking you to take them steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremiah.
My name's Mike Clark. I live 154 Westwood Drive. I've lived there for thirty years, which is roughly half the time of the subdivision. I'm all in favor of the project. I'm totally opposed to the assessment. There are sixty years approximately of taxes that have been paid by these houses and properties and the streets. As far as I could tell, have never had anything more than some hot patch here, cold patch, excuse me, here and there. And basically, I think the city owes us this. We've already paid for this in my mind. There's also some question of employee bonuses and this sort of thing with some of this roadwork, which is not answered. I'd like to see some answers on that, who's getting what, how much, and that sort of thing. I'm in favor of the project. It needs to be done, but the assessment, I don't think is reasonable in these circumstances.
Thank you, Mike. Since Mike brought that up, Mike, I remember you did send me an email asking about the bonus structure. And I'm sorry if I did not answer that. I think we went back and forth on quite a few emails, so sorry if I didn't get to that point. So Dave, do you want to explain your bonus structure for roadwork completion?
So the way that the bonus structure was set up per my contract was based on getting a certain amount of road mileage done each year. It is two percent for a half mile. And that was set up by the previous ONG committee and Mr. Matt Bowles was on that committee, Mr. Morrissey, and then I'm not sure who the other council member was on that. But as council determined that this was their top priority, they based my salary increases partly on that goal of reaching that goal. So they incentivized me to come up with solutions.
So the way that it worked was, and I can tell you because I was a part of the negotiation at the end. Dave, contractor negotiations, Dave wanted a certain amount. And we, after a long period of compromise and negotiation, we came up with an amount less than what Dave was asking for, with the difference being possible for him to get through completion of roadwork. And it was to incentivize it. It was much like the commission package, if you know people in sales. And it's not something that's done often in the state of Michigan, but I thought it was absolutely brilliant to put road and, to incentivize our city manager to give road work done, considering it was our number one goal. So, you know, it's not, don't be stainless about it. It's nothing that we've ever tried to hide. And it's resulted in a lot of roadwork getting, getting done. So.
Yeah, I think it's important also, Mayor, to mention, when we talk about bonuses, we're talking about fifteen hundred dollars to three thousand dollars. So we're not talking about some major amount per se. Thirty, forty thousand dollars, we're talking about a very modest increase.
Mike?
Is that fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars, is that per half mile? Two percent or is that different? What's the two percent?
The two percent is based on a half mile of?
How much is that in dollars?
Well, it all depends on the amount of work. For example, the Lindwood Mori project that's going on now, how, it's about seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to do that project. So and that, that is actually about a mile.
So it's two, so you did four percent per, you get two percent per half mile. You get two, two percents. How much is that in dollars? Maybe the question is two percent of what?
Two percent of my base salary.
Two percent of the base salary, yes.
With no base, so what's that dollar?
About, two percent's about thirty-two hundred dollars.
So slightly more than fifteen hundred.
For two percent, yes.
Thank you.
Do you get two percent twice or do you just get for even over a half, over a half a mile?
Well, I get two percent base and then I get two percent for a half mile.
But it's not additive for every half a mile above that, is it?
Not at, not at this point, no, right.
So it's not going up four, six for every half a mile we did, my point?
It wasn't quite up to six.
Well, that's why, that's why I was clarifying.
Okay.
All right, we got it.
How much is a dollar?
It's different every? What's the dollar amount, Dave?
Thirty-two hundred dollars for two percent.
That's what you got for your bonus last year?
Yeah.
And the year before?
Well, thirty for, for the roadwork, yes.
Okay. Any more public comment?
Good evening. Thanks for, for listening to us. My name is Christine Hudson and this is my husband Brad Blackham. And we live on Azalea Court, 5 Azalea Court. And I just want to say, to sort of piggyback on what this gentleman was saying, yes, I, I think that it needs to be done, but I think that there might be other funding that we can look for. And have you looked into state or federal funding that might not hit up the taxpayers and the homeowners? So I want to formally say that we oppose it. And I also have my letter and I don't know if it's too late to send it in, but I have it here. And thank you for listening.
Any more? Any more public comment?
Council member? My name's Ed Swanson. I live at 144 Westwood Drive. I've lived there fifty-four years. Probably the senior member of this entire group in terms of longevity. I have a concern, not so much about the pavement, because the paving is relatively an easy factor once you get the real gut work done. There are, in my, within two hundred yards of our home, there have been five properties that I can identify that each of us have had to spend thousands upon thousands of dollars to correct surface water problems that got into our basements. In our case, it costs us eighteen thousand dollars out of our pocket. Now, I didn't ask you to share in that because I figured that was my responsibility. But the fact of the matter is, the part of it was done because of poor design and poor maintenance. But we, the homeowners, got to pony up and do it. I'm in favor of the project. I am retired. I don't have income stream like many of you have. So I have to take out what Joe Biden has left me, which isn't very much anymore when you consider what's happened to the marketplace. But I'm willing to spend the five grand to take care of my obligation to make sure that that street is taken care of properly and hopefully for the rest of my lifetime. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any more public comment?
I'm Tom Styerson. I live at 36 Sumac Drive and I'm just a little bit behind. I've lived there for forty-seven years and I've seen that street deteriorate down to nothing. Right now, we'd be better off. We had a dirt road. We could leave grade and get smooth. I'm like Ed. I think that a lot of money's been spent by each individual, but we're, I'm in favor of the project because I want to see the road get fixed up and need to be done. And I think we need to do it now because if we wait any longer, it's just gonna cost us a lot more money than what it is right now. So if I can get it fixed up and get the water lines fixed, we've had just numerous breaks up there in some areas. It's just constant all the time. And the cold patching, we're wasting money all the time. I've got that all in my yard now where it's, where it's come off and they've laid it up in there. So I need to curbs and everything get fixed up. I think we're gonna be a lot better off as far as the groundwater and everything going. So I'm in favor of the project. I'd like to see it get done soon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Brianna Regan and I live at 36 Glendale Avenue, near Cold Spring Park. I am a mother to four currently and have one more on the way. I do think that the roads need to be fixed, but I am opposed to the special assessment. I can't help but think of some of my neighbors and other family members that end today's economy with gas and grocery prices constantly on the rise, as well as rising utility payments with winter coming, meaning even higher utility bill, or higher utility bills. The special assessment tax seems unequal and unfair. It is not right to add a special tax upon only some of the citizens when roads are used by all. On Glendale, we are a food traffic street all day and all night. I believe further compounding the inequality of this tax is that those not wealthy enough to pay it in a lump sum will end up paying even more due to interest. And I think that it is immoral to force poorer people to take out loans, period. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time. My name is Ian Church and I live at 209 Cold Springs Circle, one of the roads that's been impacted here. And I just want to say a few things about it. While I'm very much in favor of repairing the roads in my neighborhood, I'm opposed to the special assessment because of the costs that it imposes on residents. I'm the owner of two and a third lots on Cold Springs Circle. And so all told, we'd be looking at eight thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars towards the project. And we're just not in a position to pay that much money in a lump sum. And the prospect of having to pay that much with six percent interest isn't any better for us. It would be a, forcing a real financial burden on our family, I would feel, for years to come. For my wife and I, as far as we're concerned, we'd rather live with terrible roads than have such a lump forced upon us by our government. So we don't, we would prefer not to have this burden added to us. And again, I just want to say, reiterate the point that I think a lot of people at this point with rising... And, uh, again, I just want to, uh, say, reiterate the point that I think a lot of people, uh, at this point with, uh, rising, um, costs, inflation, are just looking to make ends meet. Uh, they're not interested in selling their home, the, the prospect of, of a vague hope to, um, increase the property values as a result of the roads isn't really going to get a whole lot of interest, I wouldn't think, for a lot of people. Um, but this, this extra tax would hurt, um, and it would hurt the poor the most. Um, that's everything I really wanted to say, uh, as I was talking to my neighbors. One of my neighbors did want me to ask the question while I was up here, uh, if there was a way that, uh, our taxes from gas, gasoline could go towards the roads, what the situation is. I have no idea how that stuff works, but I told him I'd ask that question, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. And not in Michigan, unfortunately. The state takes all the gas taxes. We can't really, uh, in Michigan, you can impose city sales tax and city gas tax and maybe in other states you can, but. Any more public comment?
Thank you. My name is Jason Durkey. I'm at Fort Picardy Place. Um, I would like to express, uh, support of a special assessment. I have five children. The first day we lived on the house we bought, my daughter wiped out on her bike. Uh, we drive through a crater every day. Um, so I, I think it does need to get done and we shouldn't push it down the road, uh, literally. Um, I, I would like to suggest that the council consider the possibility of an equal assessment for everyone in the area. So we bought a lot, uh, that is, that has two contiguous lots. Because they're contiguous, uh, I'm allowed to request that be combined and only pay five thousand dollars. It makes sense to me that paying five hundred dollars a year in future dollars will mean paying less. Makes sense to me that inflation will eat that money. It makes sense to me that my property tax value will go up. It doesn't make sense that if you own those lots because they're technically not contiguous, that you would have to pay, say, eighty-five hundred dollars. So I might suggest that it's politically prudent and morally correct that anyone in the district only pay one five thousand dollar assessment, especially since that's so small relative to the total cost of the project. That said, um, my party's support for the project, uh, I think it has to get done. And I think that if we say no to it, we will only pay higher property taxes in the future or live for thirty years without a road. And I have a bunch of kids, not without a road. But I don't think that we should charge our fellow neighbors more than ourselves are paying. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
My name is Lance Funsing. I live at five Corona Court. And I received the letter that almost received last December. And at that time, I'm, we've been spreading a four and a half million dollar project. I'm hearing a lot of different numbers tonight. I was still looking at five, four and a half billion dollars that were a maximum of five thousand dollars per household.
The maximum is five thousand dollars per household, but some of the, like Kristen said, it was going to cost something like six million dollars now to do the project.
And, and that's, uh, five thousand dollars spread over how many years was it upfront?
It can be spread over ten years. You can pay it upfront or you can pay it in five hundred dollar increments over ten years.
All right. I definitely feel the roads have to be fixed. There's no doubt about it. I went through, uh, not as much as Ed and Kathy over here, I've only been in that neighborhood for twenty-five years. And it's been patched every day or every week since I've been there. Uh, I wish the council or Piggel could take a second look at some of the cost. Uh, I don't know. Just think the overall cost is way, way much and I still, I like in purchasing and negotiating contracts. And I do know things can be renegotiated and come up with a better cost. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Uh, Scott Bertram at one thirteen Westwood Street. Uh, I want to thank, uh, my neighbors and friends for good discussion and debate on this topic. I want to thank Councilman Sharp specifically for visiting our house over the weekend to discuss, uh, some of these matters. There's no doubt to our argument from anyone in this room, I don't believe that the road should be fixed. Uh, but not every road is funded in this way. Councilman Sharp, I believe, tonight called it a third world road. Uh, that's true. That underscores the fact that this is not a vanity project. We're not looking for smooth roads because we want them. This is a safety project. Safety for cars, safety for bicycles, safety for children, safety for flood control. And public safety is among the least of the requests that taxpayers should make upon a local governmental body without being asked to pay more than they already are. These are not lightly traveled roads. Uh, there are through streets from Bacon to get to ninety-nine through Lewis. It's happening now. It's happening less than it probably would be because the roads are in such poor condition. If the roads are improved, it absolutely feels as if we are being asked to directly fund something that will benefit others far more than it would benefit us in the neighborhood. There are questions, uh, as well about upkeep. Will this road be upkept in a better manner than the current roads have been for the past number of decades? Will we be asked ten years, fifteen years from now to come back and pay over five thousand dollars to resurface these roads? We don't really have an answer for that. If this were to pass and be approved, I would ask the council additionally, and some neighbors had asked me to mention this too, uh, to consider the fact that that is a neighborhood, uh, the Westwood neighborhood where I am and with Glendale and Highland. There are dozens and dozens of children in that neighborhood, some very young. Uh, and it is our anticipation that once the roads are fixed, if they are fixed, we'd see a higher level of traffic and also faster traffic through that neighborhood and then cutting either from ninety-nine to Bacon or Bacon over to ninety-nine, um, at higher speeds as well. And so we'd ask that if, again, this is approved and moving forward, that you at least consider the addition of speed humps on some of those roads in the neighborhood to keep the children, to keep our children safe and cut down the speed and perhaps people who are looking to cut through that neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Councilman Sharp.
There's nineteen children on Highland at play currently. So I, I agree with him on that. That is a safety concern. So we definitely, if we do this, we have to look at something, you can put signs up. But the people that race it through, they're, they're not starting to look at a sign. And we definitely want to make sure we don't have an incident up there. So that's something we definitely have to consider also. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sharp. The podium's still open.
Mayor, I would like to ask Kristen to come up and speak to, um, a couple of the points that were brought up. One is how long the project will last if, if done. And the second about, uh, because we did look into the speed bumps and, um, signs and those things. Um, and, and I'd like, uh, Kristen to, uh, to give us her information she was able to research.
I actually didn't get to it today because I'm working on my other project, but, um, I can speak to it anyway. So speed bumps are not effective and they are issues with, uh, plows. So putting them in northern regions, like speed bumps on local streets are very, very little use. You will see them on private drives. They have every right to do that. Um, but on public streets, you almost will never see speed bumps and I don't recommend them. Or do I have any intent to really look forward in putting them in on this project? We are doing some other things with regard to some street widths and other things that traffic engineers u- utilize for traffic calming. Things like making the roads narrower. Um, narrower, not saying that it makes police and fire any more, uh, problematic for them to get through. But that just naturally gets people to drive slower. Um, unfortunately, a byproduct of paving new roads is the problem. A lot of it is going to be enforcement by the police department with regard to that. Um, that's really in the chief's wheelhouse and up to him as, as dealing with that. But, um, it damages our plow trucks and we can't effectively plow roads in the winter with speed bumps on them. Um, with regard to, uh, the maintenance, um, I can't speak to before my time here with regard to what was, what was done with the streets for maintenance, but since, since in the last six years, I believe, we've been very effective with doing crack filling, chip sealing, and doing the maintenance things that are supposed to be done on a road after they're paved. So the intent is, and this is an asset management program that I'm developing for the city as part of other things that I do, is to implement a plan and for the director, uh, Jason, to implement, which is that two or three years after we do a project, he'll be out crack filling, we'll look at, uh, cheaper rehabilitation things, which we don't specially assess, to pre, push the life of those road pavements out as long as we possibly can. And this is a push that the entire state of Michigan is doing. Every municipality uses the same toolbox of materials and types and things to do. But a lot of us are dealing with infrastructure that was ignored for years and years and years. So like the, uh, project we did up in the Hillcrest area in Williams Court and what we will have with Lindwood and Maury and Howell. Is it, we'll start crack filling almost immediately. We'll start spending money on it on the low-cost maintenance items and maintain the life of that, that pavement as long as we possibly can. So we're pushing the life, the pavement untouched will last about fifteen to eighteen years. So if you start doing these things, you start pushing that life out. So you can get twenty, twenty-five to thirty years out of a pavement without doing something substantial to it. So those are the things that we have implemented and are being done. You see, I believe, on Hillsdale Street today, the guys were out, uh, crack filling, even doing streets all over the city in the last few weeks, crack filling. And that, that helps minimize water in the subgrade, which softens the pavements up to deteriorate some quickly, more quickly.
Thank you, Kristen. Do you have something to add, Dave?
Yeah, if I may, um, a couple of questions that I wanted to address. Um, the one about, um, uh, the cost of the project and negotiating a better price. We inherently will do that. We will attempt to get the best price we can. Um, uh, because we're, we are all about saving money, um, and negotiating. In fact, we will put it out to bid and we'll have competitive bids. Um, typically, we work with a low contractor, but sometimes we don't, depending on the quality of the contractor, timing and other things. Um, but, uh, we will effectively try to get the best price for the residents, uh, with this project. It wouldn't affect the special assessment district, uh, we believe at this time. Um, because that was established through a policy with the city council that the max amount is five thousand dollars per resident and we were doing it based on, uh, per lot. Um, and we have tried, um, in some cases, we allowed, uh, residents to combine lots if they were adjacent. And, um, I know we have a unique situation with one of the gentlemen in this district with owning a fraction of a lot, uh, between him and a, a second lot that he owns. So we are very much, uh, aware of that situation. Um, and that does come in at subsequently less than the five thousand dollars. But I understand it is a, a fair amount, uh, at eight thousand or so. But that being said, we will address that. Um, additionally, as we talk about taxes, uh, and looking at other options. We, I've been here for seven years now. And we started off, uh, with what we deemed called Fair Committee, which was made up of a number of people, uh, from the community, residents, business owners, and looked at our different options to how we could fix the roads because that was the city's number one priority. Um, with that, we came up with the city council levying the three mil, three mills for debt. And that's part of the charter. And that was used to address debt associated with road reconstruction. Uh, as we, um, were successful in utilizing those funds, um, some council members and members of the public had the question of, were the three mills are levied by council? Should we let the residents vote on it? So we put together, uh, as a council, um, and staffed the, um, the millage that includes three and a half mills for roads and a half mill for leaf collection. And we did take that out to a vote of the public and the public voted in favor of that millage, uh, with three and a half mills going towards the roads. Um, and that's, this is our second year in that of ten-year millage. So those funds, along with, uh, other road funds that we get through the gasoline tax and Act Fifty-One with, uh, the state, um, are what's utilized to create the revenue in which to pay for these repairs. In this case, the Rip, uh, the Westwood project as it is, is, is large, is very large in size, you know, almost six million dollars or more. Um, that's saying we don't have that kind of money and it would take us a number of years to save it up and do nothing else within the city. So that's why we are looking subsequently after this item at, uh, a bond resolution where the city council would approve issuing bonds to do this work, which we will pay, would pay back. Those bonds will be, will be paid back as the city as a whole. So the whole city will be paying for various aspects of your project. Water, sewer bonds associated with this, that will come from rates, um, from residents all over the city and the same thing for roads. So other people, of course, use your roads, but they're also helping to pay for that via their taxes as well, which are being collected and identified for this, these bond repayments. Um, but we have looked, um, and I think this council would agree. We've looked and talked and, uh, uh, about just about every option we can to fix these roads. And there's no, where, in the Ripon Street case, there was a grant involved there. Um, but grants, sometimes you get them, sometimes you don't. Sometimes they have specific nuances involved. Um, and there just isn't this type, this type of grant available. As was said earlier, uh, this, this would be the third special assessment project that we have done or will, will have done. And again, um, you know, this, you know, really the same questions come up, um, you know, about the taxes. Um, you know, I've paid for many years and we understand that. And I think as a staff and a council, we really tried to come up with something that was fair. Um, but I do want you to recognize or understand that, you know, of your tax bill, the city only gets forty-two percent of that. So fifty-eight percent of it goes to the county, the school district and whatnot. So if you're, you know, your tax bill is not all going to the city. And trust me, and this council and, and others who follow us pretty well, know that we are running a very tight ship where we have one city clerk with no, no assistance. We have one rec director, um, with no assistance. You know, uh, we have two people in assessing. We have one person that does code enforcement, zoning, um, you know. There, in my office, we have a person who does economic development and, um, downtown promotion and those things as well as many other things. Um, and I'm doing two jobs with the BPU and the city manager, as the director of the BPU and the city manager. So there are many of us, um, probably the entire city working on a short staff. And so there's no frivolous spending of tax dollars by any means. Um, but, um, I, we'll listen to more public comment and, uh, if things come up that we can answer, we will be happy to do that.
Well, thanks for your input, Dave. Any more public comment?
Thank you. I'm Larry Fall from Four Azalea Court. And my concern would be to Kristen. The reason, uh, that there's probably two million dollars more is all of that hill is shale. And my question is, are we going to dig out the shale? Because when the road was put in, there was only one inch of asphalt. I've been in the road business for forty years. This was very poorly construction. And that shale eats up all the cast iron that's in the ground and all the water lines. Are we going to, uh, change Westwood Drive? Are we going from Sumac down and build that road also?
We are doing all. What was your question regarding Sumac?
Where Sumac turns.
Yes.
In Westwood, where they stopped the road before when they first built the subdivision. Uh, are you going to build that road down through there?
Connecting Westwood Street and Westwood Drive? No, we are not. We are going, there are utilities that will go through that easement, but no road will go through that. Um, with regard to the road reconstruction, this is a complete reconstruct, which is more than what we've done on the past two years' projects. Um, which means that we will dig down a certain depth, replace the subgrade and, or the subbase and then the subgrade with appropriate materials being sand and then, uh, aggregate limestone aggregate, Dutch limestone aggregate, topped with, I believe, I don't have cross-sectioning in these drawings, but I did print. But I believe. believe we'll have a minimum of four inches of asphalt on the street. So that is the plan for the reconstruct. So we will be, we've done soil morgues in the area, we know what the materials are throughout the area, so we'll be addressing those, but I believe our cross-section was four inches of asphalt on top, over top of new aggregate base and subbase. What the depths are, I don't know on the top of my head.
So it's much more substantial than what is currently there?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristen. The podium's still open. Any more public comment?
Jack, I know it was stated that you'd pay that five thousand dollars off in ten years and five hundred dollars, but is that really true? Because you're going to charge interest rate?
Yes, positive.
So it's going to be more than ten years to pay that off? And what is the interest rate?
Six percent.
It's a ten-year, ten-year payment.
On five hundred dollars a year?
Plus interest.
Plus interest, yeah, that's, I understand what you're saying.
Over the period, so it's, but it's no longer than ten years, and that's.
Okay, but not at five hundred dollars a year. Now how much, what is the interest rate now?
Six percent, Jack.
Okay, right, you hadn't said.
Yeah, we said it like three times, Jack.
Is this right or not?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Any more public comment?
Scott Sessions, one of two Cold Spring Circle. I am not in favor of the special assessment. Right now, I'm paying thirty-two hundred dollars a year in taxes, it's going to go to thirty-seven hundred, probably in the next three years, probably going to go to four thousand. It's a chunk of change, tell me. I would like to know the total votes received for or against this. So do you, does anybody know?
Katie, do we have a total, a complete count of letters in favor and letters against?
So in favor, letters are five, and in opposition, there's eighteen.
Five and eighteen. Thank you. And we only saw one of the letters in opposition. Why was that? Because they didn't come in until?
Most of these were given to me right before the meeting, so.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Katie. Any more public comment? Podium's still open.
My name is Ben Cuthbert, and I reside at one fifteen Cold Spring Circle, with my wife, Rachel, and our four children. We are glad to see this much-needed improvement and investment in our neighborhood moving forward. For the past five years, we've enjoyed living in Hillsdale, but there's one obvious exception to our enjoyment of our neighborhood, and that is the roads. So Mayor Stockford, city council members, my fellow neighbors, we can't change the negative impact of the failure to invest in the past, but we can be sure that a decision not to invest today will be a costly one. So I implore you to pass the assessment, which I'm in favor of, and we as a family are confident that the benefits far outweigh the sacrificial costs, and that's why we're ready to contribute our fair share to this project, with the understanding that the city has in fact exhausted all other funding options. So our neighborhood is really, we believe, is a shining jewel in the city of Hillsdale, and this improvement to the infrastructure will make it shine all the brighter. Thanks.
Thank you, Ben. Any more public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will close the podium and open up the council table for discussion.
Sorry, I raised my hand, but I was hiding behind the head.
Oh, you just got to go to the podium. But go ahead.
Megan Gray, I live at three Azalea Court. One of my biggest concerns is for people who can't afford the assessment, and so my question is, what happens to a homeowner who cannot keep up with the loan payments and the interest payments? I would like to know exactly if it's possible for them to lose their homes, or in what way they will be charged or dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. So under, we do have property exemption guidelines. They're federal guidelines that we adopt every year, which there are exemptions on property taxes if you live under the property line. So I would like to think nobody would lose their home because, because they just couldn't afford it. I guess it's technically possible. Kim, do you have anything to add to it? You're the assessor.
So just to explain a little bit about how the special assessment works, it is split up into ten installments. Generally, the first year we do without interest, the first year will just be a flat five-hundred-dollar installment, and then the other nine installments, there will be six percent added based on what the balance owed is of it for each year. If, we will bill it as a separate bill, usually those who are sent out in April, they have until the end of August to pay them upfront, or if it's not paid by the end of August, it goes on the winter tax bill as it becomes part of the tax lien on the property. So then it would fall under the timeline for tax foreclosure, which is basically, you would have about, about three years to pay off whatever your balance is for that, for that tax bill, along with the special assessment.
Okay, thank you, Kim.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Any more public comment?
Councilman Mayor Scott Wisely, forty Glendale Avenue. I, I'm just trying to wrap my arms around this, and if we had some big whiteboard with big numbers, we could dial it down, but we're taking this project with about four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars left for our neighborhood to pay for, right? Approximately eighty-eight properties is forty-seven, four thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-two cents, whatever it'd be. We flipped this back to the Hillcrest Orchard Ridge area of a couple of years ago when we did this special assessment there. Entirely different circumstances. This project's huge, it's deep, right? That's what Kristen says, it's deep. That neighborhood's entirely different. It's all cul-de-sacs, it's all the neighborhood, it's our neighborhood without all the traffic. You know, they see the postman, they go to work in the morning, they come home in the night, they see the postman, they see UPS, FedEx, and the ice cream truck. Come sit for a day in our neighborhood, and the amount of traffic that runs through there, I, I just cannot wrap my arms around why we would need to pay for all that when we aren't the only ones using it. And the voice that I've heard tonight, Jeremiah, great job, many others, I just really wish you'd take a look at other opportunities. You know, challenges are opportunities for accomplishments, and I think if you really racked it out, got some of us involved, maybe we could come up with some conclusion and maybe overcome these challenges and hopefully resolution.
Thank you, Scott. Any more public comment?
Amy's first. Hi, I'm Pam Tifner, one-five-seven Westwood Drive. I'm just, in listening to all this concern about the four-inch depth of asphalt, I know she said minimum, and I hope it's more than that. I don't really know anything about that, but I do know the traffic that goes past our house, and it just doesn't seem like four inches is very much that's going to, that's going to keep that from getting torn up.
Troy Wallster, one-fifty-eight Westwood Drive. Safety is a major concern. I know that we have a large sinkhole up there, I don't know if it was determined whether that was a man-made sinkhole or a natural sinkhole. If we don't take care of the water issues, we're just going to have more sinkholes if it's deemed natural. If it's man-made because we have leaky water mains, that needs to be addressed as well. The hole was huge, and we had a lot of kids that could have gotten hurt on that, so I'm not sure what we want to do with the water that's up there, but you can't put a good road on floating foundation, so that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Troy. Any more public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the podium. We'll open up the table for discussion. Councilmembers. Councilman Sizer.
I have a question that may be for the city manager or the city engineer, I'm not sure which, and it's entirely speculative, but I think it's important. Speculatively speaking, if this does not pass, how long do you think it will be before we can discuss looking at these streets again?
Well, as we've discussed at previous, the previous special assessment district meetings where those were approved, you know, we were probably looking at a twenty-year timeframe. You know, because we have so many roads in the community that are in poor shape that we're not, we're not at a loss for roads to, to repair and reconstruct. This was actually brought to us a few years back, in fact, I think it was that gentleman, yep, that, that got up and spoke earlier, or one of the residents had brought this up a number of years ago, and we've, because of the condition of the roads and the water issues and the pipe, you know, the, the water main, the sewer main issues, knowing it was going to be a, a very large project, we had to create the financing package that would accommodate that. So as was said, I said earlier, this, in order to do this, we will have to issue bonds, almost up to six-point-five-million bonds, which is about the six million dollars plus a ten-percent contingency. Without that, this project wouldn't be done except for smaller pieces as absolutely necessary. So it wouldn't be anytime soon that this will be looked at again. But I will say that on the plans for this, the city had already, has already committed at about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in cost, of our ARPA monies we received for designing the plans for this. So there's a professional engineering company doing plans and design with Kristen's oversight and management.
Okay, so effectively, we're between a rock and a hard place here, because I understand that people are paying taxes, and they say, where did the taxes go? But as the city manager outlined, the city's share of the taxes is not that much, and then of that share, which is a relative pittance, sixty-five percent of it goes to police and fire. And I'm personally very supportive of these things, we've had a number of people say that the number-one thing the city should do is, is, perhaps the only thing in my mind, is provide for the general safety. So I would never argue that we cut police and fire services, which would become even more vital, because the sheriff doesn't have people on the road anymore overnight. So you, you can't draw blood from stone. I mean, we pursue grants when they're there, although some people object to that when we do that. I don't think anybody who's been following the issue would say that I, of all people, have been tax-hungry or anything like that, that, that is, no one on either side of the issue would say that, I mean, I voted against the three mills time and again, because I was never comfortable with taxing people without representative vote. The people voted for those, for those four mills and change, and I, I don't know that in good conscience I can, I can vote to hold this over for another twenty years if that's the realistic alternative. I know that everyone has goodwill, they say we can do this, we can do that, give me the idea. The solid idea, not, let's explore this together, and unfortunately, if I could solve these problems, and we could all solve these problems, we'd all be rich, and we'd be in a much stronger Midwest, in a much stronger country, because this is not an issue that's unique to Hillsdale. And I, I say that with all respect to everyone here, because I love it when people bother to, to come to talk about issues, we don't get enough participation, so I don't want to disrespect anyone on any side, but as it stands, I, I don't like it, but I don't see how I could vote against this, unless somebody has something for me.
Thank you, Councilman Sizer. Councilman Sutcliffe?
I have a correction to make and a question, but this is not a property tax, this is an assessment in which drops off. And we're talking big numbers here, no question, but if we take these big white charts and break it all down, if my math is right, we're coming down to about a dollar forty-something and change a day for residents. If you break it down per day, it comes down to about a dollar forty-seven, which, I mean, correct if I'm wrong, that's my little sketchy math.
So we, we did some, some analysis on the number today, today. Well, we didn't look at what the cost of the special assessment was, we looked at how much of the taxes were going to road repair and or reconstruction. But you're right on, on the special assessment, on the road repair and reconstruction of the tax bill for maintenance, and this is all the, and this is why the city didn't have any additional funds to do more roadwork in the past. The general operating millage of the city is twelve-point-five mills. On top of that, you can do two-point-five mills for road maintenance. And given the fact, the condition of our roads, they take a lot of maintenance money to do that. Historically, up until a few years ago, they had no money beyond that besides Act fifty-one money, and that's restricted by the state how you can use that gasoline tax revenue as well. That first goes to major roads, and then if you have any leftover due to state formula, you might be able to use some of it for local roads. Most of this stuff that we're doing is local roads. So we can transfer some, but it's very restricted based on the state. You know, they give you money and they tell you what you can do with it. That being said, for a home that's valued at about two-hundred thousand, so taxed at a hundred thousand, you are looking at about a hundred-and-fifty dollars to three-hundred dollars additional in taxes for the, the three-and-a-half mills, I believe. So, yes, it is.
Well, three-hundred, take that by three-sixty-five, and I go to the dollar.
Correct. So, you know, if anyone has, you know, deep concerns, you know, they could sit down with the assessor, we'd be happy, they, she'd be happy to meet with them, the city engineer or myself, or a combination thereof. We, we truly, you know, in getting the letters out and getting the discussion out, was trying to, you know, prompt discussion so we can educate and, you know, describe the project and, and we have looked at all options as far as funding it. When you look at, you know, as was mentioned earlier about the payment breakdown, the city is paying eighty-four percent, and when I say the city, it's all the taxpayers, and then the sixteen percent for the special assessments are those that directly benefit. It was brought up about, you know, that one subdivision is closed really for through traffic, but the second, the Linwood, Maury and Howell, it's hospital traffic, it's the out-of-town traffic going in South Hillsdale, gets all that as well, and they're paying the special assessment as well. And, and they're paying for storm work at the Maury Street intersection, which historically is completely flooded, and, and, you know, we're, we're working to resolve that, so. Longwood can answer your question, Councilman Sutcliffe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sutcliffe. Councilman Jerb?
When she said there was eighteen letters...
When she said there was eighteen letters against it, how many people here didn't turn their letter in that are in favor of it? So there are other people that are not here that I've talked to that were in favor of it also, that are not accounted for. So those eighteen letters, trust me, I, you could ask these people and see me, I was there, I did spend two minutes talking to them. Twenty minutes, half hour, I wanted to hear their concerns. The issue is, if we don't fix this street, I dare anybody to go down Marion Street. Take a drive down that. Your street's gonna look like that in a couple of years. Because there's no sense in putting asphalt backup on something that's not gonna hold it anymore. You're wasting your time and taxpayers' money on something that's just going to waste, it's going in people's yards. Your cars, when you keep continually driving on those streets every day, yeah, you don't get a lot of traffic, but you're driving on it. I work at an automotive repair shop. I see so many cars coming in the last three months I've worked there since I retired. Springs, shocks, struts, wheel bearings, everything, two to three thousand dollars bills. And their mechanics make only seventy-five dollars where I work at an hour. You go to these other ones, backseat although, some of them make a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. You're footing that bill. You're saving five thousand dollars if you, you guys don't want this, but you're paying for it by repairing your car. You continue to drive on those streets. You drive on them. I've only been up there a few times and it's it's terrifying when you go up there. Those, that's like I said, it's a third road street. Looks like it's been beat fifty-two, what if there made a bomb and run on it every time? It is terrible. The water issues they have up there is terrible. We've been asked to come up with a solution as council. I've been a council since two thousand seven. Every time I heard, "Fix these roads, find a way to do it." This is the solution we found. Everybody's gonna pay. If you want these streets, you want it. The one thing that Kim didn't bring up is, some people think, "Well, forget these streets, they're tax prob-" their taxes that go up on their properties. That's interstructure, that will not raise your taxes. That has nothing to do with it. But if you want to sell your home and you've got the roads like you have right now, I know some people that live up on Westwood Drive had a difficult time trying to sell their house because people loved the house. But they said, "I'm not driving on this road every day." That's ridiculous. That road is in desperate need of repair. I urge this council to think. We all, when we got elected, what was our first thing we heard about? Find a way to fix these streets. Here it is. It's painful. The economy's in worse shape. I'm a Democrat. Sorry, folks. We got enough in the White House. But, we have to find a way to fix these streets. And this is the only solution I could see doing it. It's not a secret. Cory made sure that people knew I was. But I work for you guys. I represent you guys. I listen to you guys. And what I've heard is, find a way to fix these streets. And that's the solution I've come up with. So that's my thoughts and issues on this. I have worked hard for you guys. Every time I went up there campaigning, it was embarrassing to go up there and ask you to vote for you, vote for me, looking at your streets. You're paying high taxes up there for beautiful homes up there. You deserve a nice street up there. You deserve to get attention. You've gone too many years without it being fixed, and we are now here offering a way to fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Sheriff, Mr. Chance. Thank you, Councilman Sharp. Any more council comment? Councilman Beer.
So, Katie, there was, how many properties were we talking, like eighty-eight? Eighty-eight properties, okay. And actually, the people present today is pretty fifty-fifty for and against it. But what kept coming up as far as those that were against it, weren't necessarily against fixing the streets. They were against the process and how we're gonna accomplish that. And even when you look at the letters, I had eighteen that were against it. I'm assuming probably because of the process. I heard people talk about, why should they shoulder all the burden and the taxes? Well, with the people of Hillsdale, a couple of years back, approved that four percent road mileage. So, I don't live up there, but I'm contributing to that project. It's gonna be paid back in the bonds. I just think it's, you know, I hate the burden this will cause on some people. But currently in the tax system with property taxes, if you're under the poverty level, you, you can actually get relief on that. So I'm definitely gonna vote for it because this would actually allow the rubber to actually get on a road.
Thank you, Councilman Beer. Any more council comment? Councilman Soha.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I was against the assessments originally when I came on the council for many of the reasons that you spoke well here, but then I learned over time, there's, this is the solution the city has chosen. And there is no other way to do the roads. And so when the city manager says that you'll go to the back of the line, that's legitimate. Because we had ninety-five percent failed roads just a few years ago, and we're in the sixties now. Is that correct?
We've got almost thirty percent of our roads in good condition now, and special assessments have played a hand in that.
Right. And so, speaking about the Westwood District, I actually voted against that. Many of the reasons that you spoke here, but the, the community is thrilled as a whole. And because of the safety issues, because their cars aren't bumping as they go up and down the road. So I, I live on Broad Street, so I don't, I'll never be assessed probably because. But even after the vote passed for the Westwood District, because my wife and I spoke about it beforehand, that if it passed, I chose another councilman joined me to donate five thousand dollars to the city in yearly increments, because I said I want to fix the roads. Now, they need to be fixed. It's necessary. And the money has to be, come from somewhere. And unfortunately, it's, it's a pinch on our pocketbook. And this isn't an easy, an easy thing for my family to do. It is a sacrifice. But I feel like it's a necessary one because I want to see the city of Hillsdale continue to improve and continue to draw people here that, and to see a place that's nice and drily. So, I, I appreciate the dissent, I appreciate the discussion, I appreciate the stability that was here tonight, but I, I don't vote.
Thank you, Councilman Soha. Any more council discussion? Councilman Breiner.
Yes, so I've driven up in that area once in my lifetime. I'll never go up there again. I, I usually make the, the trip down to Bacon across Ripon now, because Ripon's nice, nice and smooth to get to ninety-nine. As far as, you know, saying everybody or you pay your dues and everything like that, we are borrowing funds as a city, which every taxpayer is liable for. So it's not just, you know, a certain group of individuals that are paying, are on the hook for this. In a roundabout way, I kind of want to vote no for it, just so some, maybe my street will jump in front of your dances. And then the rest of the city will have to burden the debt. And I only have to pay sixteen percent. That's the way I look at it. Some other things, you know, you, we suggest things. And I'm just sitting here doing a little bit of math as far as, I know we've put the city income tax on, available before. But as residents of the city of Hillsdale, we should honestly think about that. Think about how many people travel outside of city limits to come into the city to work and utilize. You know, an average salary in Michigan is sixty thousand. I did it based off the nonprofits that we have in the city of Hillsdale. And those individuals working and traveling our roads where we live, that's about two thousand employees, based off forty thousand. Math-wise, one percent income tax, city income tax would raise about eight hundred thousand a year. Over the course of a year, we could put those back into the roads and then it's a burden of everybody that works and utilizes the roads in the city of Hillsdale. That's my solution as far as that goes, but I know every time we put it on the ballot, it fails. So the only other option is the special assessment districts. Because if you look at our budget, our annual tax revenue is a little over three million. And over two million of that goes to the place of buyer alone. That leaves a million dollars for a city to run on. It's not a lot. Granted, we get grants and, and revenue sharing and other income, but we have to look elsewhere. Oh nine didn't help us at all, property values. We didn't do a lot of road construction before then, and we haven't done really a lot after that. So, the money's gotta come somewhere. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Councilman Breiner. Any more council comment? Well, here we are. It seems like we have the same discussion every time we have a special assessment. Everybody says the exact same things, so. I just never dreamed we were gonna be doing special assessments for all the neighborhoods to fix all the roads. I just agree with Mr. Wisely that they were four roads like Hillcrest to jump in front of the line. I do want to say, you know, I wish there's not a better councilman on Hillsdale City Council in its entire history, I think than Councilman Sharp. If he wants to get something done, he makes sure it gets done. It's true. I, you're very inspiring, Bruce.
With that being said, a motion to approve the Westwood project.
Hold on now. Hold on. That wasn't, that was awesome. I just wanted, I was, I'm gonna vote against this, and I just wanted to talk you up because I know how important this is. So I didn't want it to be such a slap in your face. Because I appreciate you and I want you to know that. And I appreciate that you have put your own money into it too, Councilman Soha, but when you put your own money into it, you don't put that money in for somebody else. You put it in, in solidarity with them, and I appreciate that, but that doesn't remove the tax burden from somebody else who has it thrust upon them when they don't want it. So. I don't know, I guess I don't have anything else to say. I just didn't ever, we, we've tried every different option and then we've been throwing a million things at the wall. Some of them stick, some of them don't. The effort with the city has been absolutely tremendous. I appreciate what you have done, Dave. I appreciate so much what Kristen has done. I just feel like when we put the millage on the ballot, that the residents of Hillsdale fought when they were voting for that millage, that they were voting to get their streets fixed. And then to put a special assessment on top of that, it's just like, here's another thing. So, I don't want to be critical of everybody, of anybody. I appreciate everyone's effort. And I agree, one thing I do agree with at one hundred percent is that those streets over there need fixed very much. So. You can go ahead.
I make the motion to approve curation of the Westwood area's special assessment.
Support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Beer. Can I roll call?
Councilperson Beer.
Yes.
Morrissey.
Yes.
Sharp.
Oh yeah.
Suchol.
Yes.
Crayac.
No.
Sizer.
Gradually, yes.
Mayor Stockford.
No.
Councilperson Soha.
Yes.
And Breiner.
No.
Six yes, three no. Motion passes Resolution three five one six.
Thank you, Katie, and thanks to all for coming out tonight. And we will close this public hearing and move into new business. Item number A, resolution for twenty twenty-two capital improvement bonds. Dave.
Thank you, Mayor. So as was indicated, the next item is the capital improvement bond, bonds that would be associated with this project. The resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds is in, is in your council packet. We also included the resolution starting the forty-five day period in which the public had to make comments regarding issuing the bonds. We did not receive any public comment or petitions against the bond. So that being said, we would request that the city council approve the bond resolution so that we may pursue up to the six and a half million dollars bonds at six percent interest to do both, or to do this project as well as some additional capital improvement projects in the water and sewer departments.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions? Councilman Beer.
Dave, wasn't that up to six percent?
We have, historic, the last two, we have done it at six percent. But the charter says up to six percent, yes.
Any more?
Let me clarify. Yes, up to six percent, I am putting this separate ad on here, for the, the bonds, yes. So if it, if it comes in at higher than six percent, then we'll have to reevaluate.
Any more questions for Dave? Any council discussion?
Yeah, motion.
Second.
Motion on the floor from couns- from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Morrissey to issue a resolution for twenty twenty-two capital improvement bonds. Can I roll call those, any questions?
Councilperson Morrissey.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
Suchol.
Yeah.
Crayac.
Yes.
Sizer.
Yes.
Mayor Stockford.
No.
Councilperson Soha.
Yes.
Breiner.
Yes.
And Beer.
Yes.
We have eight, one, carries, and that's Resolution three five one seven.
Thank you, Katie. We'll move on to item B, in new business, resolution to revoke industrial facilities exemption certificate two thousand nineteen dash forty-five, Central Coast Designs, Inc. Dave.
Thank you, Mayor. This was in regards to the one public comment we received in regards to the Central Coast IFT that was approved. Unfortunately, the purchaser of the facility had not, has not requested that that IFT be transferred or revoked, which triggered this revocation on our part. We are talking about, as far as benefit wise, we are talking about about four thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-four cents of the taxes that were dated in twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. So that, that is the amount of rate of taxes we need to qualify. Now, it's important also to mention that these specific revocations can also appeal past city council to the state tax commission as well. If they're against it, but that is the dollar amount we're talking about and why. So we'll put it on here to revoke.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave?
Hey, one thing I want to add to that is actually, your resolution is to request the revocation. The actual decision whether or not to revoke it is made by the state tax commission.
Okay.
This would be a resolution requesting that they revoke the certificate. But there is a hearing that's available, the state tax commission, they have it here, they can get noticed, everyone, so if the property owner wants to come, our assessor can come, they, they give it out, can be heard from the state tax commission before they decide whether to prosecute or revoke it. If you don't pass the resolution, it doesn't go before the tax commission.
Okay, thank you, Tom. That is odd. So we are for the certificate, but Okay, thank you, Tom. That is odd. So we award the certificate, but we don't...
Actually, you don't award the certificate either. You recommend approval of the certificate, and the state tax commission awards it. So that's why they have to make the decision to revoke it.
Very good. Any discussion, Councilman Sizer?
So then, for this, uh, may I seek remedy? Would you?
He doesn't have to seek a remedy. The request goes to the state tax commission from, your resolution goes before the state tax commission. They have a hearing, they give everyone notice of it. He would have an opportunity to go to the state tax commission, have a type of hearing, represent any arguments he had as to why it shouldn't be revoked.
But they will not have that hearing until such time as we vote and recommend the revocation?
They won't, they won't revoke it because there's not been a request in front of them.
There's no argument to revoke it.
Yes.
And I think it's important to mention that he's not asking that not be revoked. I think it's more of a question of the, that
Clawback.
The clawback, because he's no longer the owner, so subsequently, he would be paying the clawback even though he sold the building, sold the business. That's the, that's the problem.
That's the hundred percent.
And you, when you purchase a building, when you sell it, you double back what you paid for, correct?
Almost.
Okay. Councilman Soha?
Is there a way to revoke without a clawback?
That would be a legal question, or Kim might know that if she's still out there. I do not believe so, but I'm not the expert.
To, to answer your question, I see you made a face, Oliver. Uh, because I put almost double into the building. It was a unusable building. I put seven hundred thousand dollars into the building, so just a point of reference.
That wasn't a point, you weren't just doing, okay, that's just, but I, you did put money into it, but thank you for answering.
Yeah, that's why I was, I was paid the extra.
The clawback, right, is part of the agreement that you have, so you do that agreement with the property owner that gives the city the opportunity to clawback the funds if it's revoked. I don't know that it's mandatory to revoke the clawback. I think that's something you have to institute, but, um, I couldn't tell you for sure whether or not you could revoke it or not that. I think that's my idea, but I don't know that for sure. I'll, I'll be back.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I, I think, you know, we come into these agreements. We're on our side of the bargain. The people that come to the agreements with us should go to their side of the bargain. Unfortunately, as this is, um,
Well, Dave, I agree with you. I think we need to enforce all of them or enforce none of them. I don't think it's fair to pick and choose. We enforce our contracts or we don't, so... Any more council discussion? Move? Oh, sorry, Councilman Brighter.
Yes, um, I would, you know, be more amped to revoke it and not do the clawback. Um, Mr. Russell brought a business to Hillsdale and paying jobs to where he could have took that business and went somewhere else with it. Um, and bought a building in Marshall or, you know, Coldwater or Jackson where it was closer to a, you know, highway or something like that, but he chose Hillsdale. Um, dumped money into the business, um, sold it, and I believe it's still an operating business inside the city of Hillsdale. So, you know, if we could look at maybe potentially doing that, um, and looking for an answer on that, and whether or not we could revoke it and not do the clawback.
One thing that, kind of the timing of why these are on this particular meeting. We have to present these to the tax commission by October thirty-first, so, um, we don't have much time in which to send them the, the revoke, revoking paper board. Otherwise, it doesn't happen for another year. So that's why, um, that's why they are on this agenda to, so we have time to get them forward.
Most, most of the time when we revoke these and do a clawback, isn't it because they closed the business at some point in time within that period? Or is it, have we always just done a clawback?
Well, these are, since I've been here, I don't, I don't recall having many clawbacks. Unfortunately, we have three, three on the agenda here for tonight. Some we, um, probably could have brought forward sooner, but, uh, trying to work with the different businesses, but I guess the question like Tom had said, we don't, I don't know that there's an answer to if we can suggest the clawback not be, uh, executed, um, but, you know, we do have a contract and that's money that would go into the coffers of the city residents that they put forward to promote this business.
And, and the way, the reason for the revocation, um, if you actually look at the statute, it is the criteria that the state tax commission looks at to determine whether or not to revoke it. The reason is because you have two years to get done what you said initially we're gonna get done, particularly with the building, right? So you have to complete that project within that two-year period. If you don't do that, that's cause to revoke your certificate. Typically, these occur because the, as Councilman Soha referred to, the party that's getting the benefit of that tax reduction didn't do the thing that they were supposed to do. And so that, the revocation in this instance, um, would be because they've decided not to continue, right? So if they're not gonna continue under that agreement, then you revoke it, but statute deals specifically with revocation. I can't remember if, if it even speaks to the clawback provision in terms of what the state tax commission does. I think that when you revoke it, that triggers the clawback because presumably the person that received, the property owners received the benefit of that has didn't hold up their end of the bargain, so the community gets those funds that they otherwise would have received up for that agreement back. That's basically what I'm saying.
Thank you, Tom. Councilman Beer?
Per the tax abatement, the property owner was gonna spend, uh, say a hundred thousand. And per, uh, during the public comment, he spent well more than that. But it's not really, um, uh, specific here as far as what that hundred thousand was gonna be spent on. I'm just wondering what, uh, what prompted the, uh, for us to be entertaining this right now?
He sold the business and the building.
Okay, so it's no longer applicable?
Yes.
Okay, but prior to selling the building, had he, um, basically, part of the agreement was to have people working there for the ten years, or what was the time period? On the tax abatement?
It was ten years, right?
Ten years, right?
Yes.
But prior to selling the building, had he fulfilled his commitment on the, uh, abatement?
Yes.
Up to that point?
Yes.
Councilman Sharp?
Uh, it was last council meeting, we had Camry a tool on here, bought one, and I made mention of that. Here we go again, because we've had some clawbacks in the past before, just a few. But if we, between the rock and the hard place on this, we walk away and let this happen, then what's next? I mean, the other ones are gonna say, well, you got away with it. I guess we're gonna try it now. If we don't, and it's really not our call. All we're doing is just turn it over to the state and let them to make the issue and decide. It's really, all we're doing is just making the recommendation, correct?
Any amount is what, four thousand dollars or something?
Forty-three hundred and something change.
Okay. So if you guys don't, if you guys don't remember, at the last meeting, we pretty much directed staff to start looking at clawing back on some of these things. I don't like doing these tax abaments anyways. Not because I don't like giving people a break on taxes, but I think it's picking winners, picking losers, choosing winners and losers. And, uh, I don't know, if we're gonna, if, if we're gonna go by the policy that we need to do them because everybody else does, then that's how we get businesses to come here in a minute.
So with the point that I tried to make was that you do not get a tax rate. I paid more taxes because of the abatement. And I talked to Troy, and he asked me, like, I said, he's gonna rescind his, uh, request. I don't know if he's still here, because I said it is not. You do not, I get an extra tax bill for my taxes. It's not a tax rate.
It's not a good deal, then.
It's not a tax rate. It's a tax increase. I paid more in taxes because I got the abatement.
That sounds like it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a horrible deal.
Go ahead, Kim.
So, that's not correct. The difference is, the additional money that he spent to improve the building would have been considered as part of his ad valorem assessment instead of being a separate tax bill billed at fifty percent. It's still taxable improvements. Commercial property, there's no exemption for normal repair and maintenance, like there is on residential property. So any improvements you make to the property are taxable.
Thank you. And Kim, they're at fifty percent, so the separate bill is to show that it's at fifty percent of what it would have been.
It's billed separately because we have to do it at a, at a different rate.
But what I would contest is that you make certain assumptions about the condition of the building that aren't aware to the assessors, like that the building had no heat and no lights and no, uh, sprinkler systems. You, you don't know that, and the taxes, the S E V reflected that over the last nine years. And it was a complete, uh, disrepair, and I put over a hundred thousand dollars into it. And what I'm saying is I raised the tax base, uh, you know, by selling it for twice as much as what I bought it for. And it's not a perfect process, the assessment, and yes, I did improve the building, which would, you know, give me a fifty percent discount.
Any questions for Kim? Anything to add today?
The only thing I will say, we would have looked at the price that he paid for the building at the time that he purchased it. And then there were permits filed that showed additional improvements made after that fact. So we may not, he may be correct to that. I wouldn't know specifically what was wrong with the building.
I pulled one from that for a while here. That was a, so you wouldn't have, have any way to have known?
Any more questions, discussions, council? Sounds like a real stinker.
So regardless, we, we need to revoke it because the building's been sold and the business has been sold. So there's not there's not much decision there.
Do I have a motion to adopt the attached resolution revoking industrial facilities exemption certificate two thousand seventeen? Oh, sorry, Tony.
Council had something to say.
All I had done is I went back through and filed a provision in the I F T letter agreement between the city and the property owner, which indicates in paragraph seven A, in the event that the state tax commission revokes the I F T prior to the I F T expiring, the company agrees to reimburse Hillsdale on all effective taxing jurisdictions the full amount of the taxes for the real or personal property of nature that would actually have been abated during the term that the I F T was actually in effect, plus interest of one percent over the adjusted prime rate that's determined by the Michigan Department of Treasury. So it is that upon the revocation, the property owners agreed to reimburse those if it is revoked. And the other thing you have to remember that I think we, I did reference was, it's not just the city's taxes you're talking about. It's when you have one of these approved, it's every taxing jurisdiction, the school district, everybody else that would get a piece of that tax by, their tax has been reduced by that same amount as the city's. So they actually get notice of the hearing, the state tax commission too, and they get to go and present if they want to. So, um, that's the other thing to keep in mind here, is you're not just talking about the city's money that should be left, letting sit out of the table there. And I can reimburse by virtue of a very provisional property owner agreed to. It's every other taxing jurisdiction is going to...
Sounds like a stinker. This is, we're not, tax code sucks, it does. Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Soha to revoke industrials, facilities exemption certificate two thousand nineteen dash zero forty-five for Central Coast Designs, Inc. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We will move on to item number C, resolution to revoke industrials and industrial facilities exemption certificate two thousand seventeen dash one eight one, Core Coil Composites LLC. Go ahead, Dave, and as you guys have all seen, we've got letters here from, uh, from Drew Hombeck?
Correct.
Okay.
So, uh, again, I F Ts are available only to manufacturers who plan to occupy and operate the facility. We have had investors in the past who have purchased property. They made improvements, but were turned down for I F Ts because they were not the user of the facility. Example would be two eighty-two Industrial, um, was owned, owned by Warehouse Properties in Coldwater, occupied by Paragon, but but did not qualify, and Paragon did not qualify under the terms of a lease. Paragon, um, because they did not pay the taxes, um, did not qualify for an I F T. So there are specific nuances. And while we recognize that, uh, Mr. Hombeck has invested, uh, in improvements to the property and indirectly to economic activity within the city, and portions of the buildings are occupied for warehousing without the operation, without the operation of, like, Core Coil directly creating manufacturing jobs. They are not in compliance with the agreement and are outside the intent of the I F T. So it's been five, five years. The agreement was approved in July of two, two thousand seventeen, and he had to December fifteenth, two thousand twenty, to get up and running his manufacturing business and get the facility in order. Because of COVID and supply chain issues, um, the city, um, basically has given him two additional years to get those things and honor the contract with the city. And at present, um, there's nothing, there's no manufacturing going on in the facility. In addition, um, leading up to this meeting, um, Mr. Hombeck was sent a letter from the city attorney asking specifically for a timeline of when he would be manufacturing and hiring people. He did not answer that question. We've asked him a number of times. And as you can see in his latest letter, he still does not give us a timeline. He just says he's prepared and ready to manufacture. That's not telling us when he will be doing this. So there's no timeline for when he will actually be meeting the obligations of his I F T. And additionally, the Economic Development Corporation of the city actually spent about twenty thousand dollars on the front end of this project, helping, um, do some of the, the background paperwork, or not paperwork, investigations that incentivized Mr. Hombeck to purchase the building, and I think you would agree with that.
I agree with that.
But, a-again, um, this is one of those things that I spoke about earlier, is we're coming up on October thirty-first, which is the tax deadline date. And we either revoke this or we have to wait another year to bring it forward and apply. And again, um, we're two years beyond, um, what he had indicated in his agreement, which was December And again, we're two years beyond what he had indicated in his agreement, which was December fifteenth, twenty twenty. And now we're almost at, you know, ten three twenty-two. So, with that being said, we believe we've been, we've tried to work with Core Coils on this now, but we don't have any solid information on any staff plans to start production. Additionally, just so everyone is aware, the clawback, and this is much more substantial, it's a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. So, that is what we're talking about in this particular project or building. So, that being said, that's what I had to state.
Thank you, Dave. I assume you're Mr. Homelbeck?
I'm Mr. Homelbeck.
Thank you for coming tonight. If you've got some stuff that you'd like to add that aren't in the letter, or if you'd just like to speak for a few minutes, you're welcome.
Sure, thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Drew Homelbeck, I'm the owner of Two Two One Industrial Drive in Hillsdale. Yeah, back in August, I received a letter from John Loving, Lovingger regarding to provide a letter. I provided this binder, and I don't know if any of you have seen this binder, but it included a cover letter, which was posted on your website, but included, but what you probably didn't see was the efforts and achievements that we've accomplished at over a million dollars of investment in the building. And every, every year I provided Kim Thomas with the annual report, that said, this is what we invested in, these are, you know, here's the whole of the photos, the before and afters and everything else. Going forward, you know, with this million dollars investment and the install, installation of a custom-built, you know, sheet line for making this ultra-lightweight plastic, we ran into a situation where we had a storm in May of twenty eighteen that took off two-thirds of my roof and all the fascia panels around it. The insurance company provided with a incompetent contractor to repair the work, who did the things that were convenient, I was right. And, and again, it wasn't approved, the building continued to leak, this litigation involved. Litigation was postponed four times due to COVID, because this was a civil case, you know, criminal cases have to go first. Two weeks from now, I'm supposed to be into a jury trial here in the, in the city of Hillsdale. And my situation right now is, you know, they've put a lien in my building, not because I didn't pay the contractor, because they didn't pay, the insurance company didn't pay any supplemental claims, that were all included in the scope of work. So, this has been the perfect storm, you know, for my situation. You know, the complaint is that I failed to provide good faith. If anything, I've, you know, I've paid my taxes, I put in the building, I did all the restoration work. I have the people involved, I've got my customer support. It's just a matter of I cannot get the funding and the capital to move forward with ordering a million dollars a month in plastic, because this thing consumes three thousand pounds an hour. It's a huge process. The revenue stream, my loss of revenue in my litigation is about five million dollars a year. This is a serious business for the city of Hillsdale. It's, it's a wonderful opportunity by revoking this and doing the clawback. I mean, that's, that's the straw that broke this camel's back. And that's, you know, that's all I have to say. If, if you do it, it's, you know, it's very hindsighting, but like I said, I could show you, I could show you the samples. I offered to have my customers here, you know, and they said, you know, due to the time, I didn't even know about this thing until, you know, late last week. So, just a conflict of interest for, you know, for my customers, but, you know. Be with, you know, I'm at your mercy right now, but, you know, as far as the question of when can I get this thing going, I need to get a waiver of lien to get it off the building. That is supposed to happen in two weeks, if the court, you know, views it in my favor, which there's no reason not to. With that going, I was on the phone with Huntington Bank today, they've got the funding, we've got meetings next week set up to do it. The customers are waiting for this product. It's, it's, push the button, turn it on, fill the phone, plastic and run. So, I can't give a definitive date until two weeks from now. So, if I can't, by recommending that you revoke me, I'm just gonna tell my customers, sorry, I'm gonna shut this down, I'm gonna, you know, file an abatement, see if it's done. But, you know, that's, that's the situation right now. Either we, either we give them the opportunity not to revoke it and move forward, or I don't have, you know, I don't have plan B at this point in time, I'm a spent. So, I'm at your mercy and I appreciate your time and your consideration. If you have any questions for me, please ask.
Councilman Sharp?
Two Two One Industrial Drive, used to be the old Hillsdale little building.
That's the one.
Been there for about twenty years off the line, so I'm very familiar with that building.
Yes, sir.
You say you're ready to roll, but you're not saying anything about your workforce, how many people you're gonna employ there.
Yes.
Do you realize that right now, if you look across the street from you, Precision Gauge's got a great big sign out there, ACT has a great big sign out there, hiring, hiring. You're gonna have difficult finding the workforce. I mean, I came from, retired from Clemens. They had a hundred and forty percent turnover rate over there of employees. So, everybody is looking for employees, and you're, you're just putting this out there and saying, well, you're ready to go, but you don't even say how many people you're gonna have and where the workforce is gonna come from.
Yes, in my application, sir, it's, you know, we are gonna hire about twelve people. And this is a very, very automated system. So, basically, a lot of the people that we will require, with the exception of a high-level machine operator, setup technician, which I have, you know, I have at my disposal. We need people that are the high-low operators, we need inventory patrol, we need office staff. Not extremely high, you know, concern as far as getting those people.
Thank you, Councilman Sharp, any more questions?
I would just say that we do have one more meeting on the seventeenth before the end of the month. You know, we have matters to counsel, so it could be for tabled.
May I ask our legal counsel, are we satisfied of the possibility that there will be a legal disposition of this case within two weeks, or that's potentially, so?
I have no idea. It depends what, what the issues are and how many witnesses folks are gonna call and all that sort of thing. So, I've had trials that lasted for months. It's just I've had trials that lasted two days. That's what you're presenting.
This trial is scheduled to last two weeks, from the eighteenth until about the twenty-sixth.
Counselors?
I would just ask, when did you say the court date was?
Eighteenth of October, after the meeting. Yeah. It's Tuesday the eighteenth.
You know, we, just to say, you know, this is, it has been five years, and I think we all acknowledge Mr. Homelbeck has rehabilitated the building, invested substantial funds into it. Again, it goes back to the contract he had to the end of twenty twenty, December fifteenth, and he's actually been given two additional years to meet that obligation.
But I, but I, not to interrupt, but I think, you know, if you look at the language, it says, you know, circumstances beyond my control. And, and I think, I think uniformly with COVID, with the supply chain, these are all things that will be up, that the storm in May of twenty eighteen beyond my control. And like I said, I've done everything I can. You know, my, my personal investment has been hundreds of thousands of dollars beyond, you know, a billion dollars I put into it, just in legal fees, you know, it's absurd.
Councilman Solak, did you have something?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Homelbeck, I don't know if you remember.
I do, I do.
Back when you first started.
Yes.
I was actually driving by there just a few weeks ago, and I saw, I was curious what was going on, if anything, and then I see the council packet, and all of a sudden, here you are. So, the five years, I mean, it's either the comedy of errors, you know, beyond your control. Would it be reasonable if we pushed this to reconsider next year? That you would be up and running and in production?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Would it be reasonable if that did not happen for us to reassess this and say, Mr. Homelbeck, thank you for your investment? And I know.
That's, it's a million dollar question. Is it possible that the, you know, the opposing attorneys or the court systems are saying, hey, here's another COVID strain, we're gonna postpone another six months? You know, I have to get the lien off the building. You know, with that, the lien is over six hundred and forty thousand dollars. It's just a complete fabrication, or I'm handcuffed as far as what I can do. You know, I, you know, there's just nothing else in the pipeline to put into this thing.
Huntington, for example, is not willing to invest with that.
Absolutely.
I can book one up with that lien.
The lien, Huntington, Huntington is of an institution that they require, where they rely on the SBA. If you check the box, the SBA says any type of litigation, then it's not given to you. So, but I've had other, I've had other businesses, I've actually had my customer, you know, approach me, say, do you need help? You know, but we want, you know, sixty percent equity in your business.
Counsel, Councilman Veer, did you have a question?
No, I'm assuming that's a mechanical lien that was put on at the weekend?
It's a construction lien.
Okay, and when was that done?
Construction lien was two weeks, it was the fifteenth of January two thousand and nineteen, two weeks after they had finished the project.
And of course, then we had COVID.
Yes, sir. Well, what happened was, they finished the project in December of twenty eighteen. It was, it was eight months to complete the job. In January of twenty nineteen, even before I was aware that I had a lien on my building, I had thirty-four leaks in the roof system. And, and they continue to deny repairing those leaks for the entire calendar year. And so, my equipment was covered up. And then I found that in May, that I had a lien on the building, which is complete, you know, is against the MCL, but.
And then, and also currently, you're, currently on your taxes?
Absolutely, never missed a tax payment, I paid my assessment for the paving of your avenue. I, you know, never missed a utility bill.
Well, I'm to the opinion, being that it's a little bit different than the first one, from the standpoint that the business was sold, its intent is to hire people, that, and with the provision that this counsel can clawback, I tend to agree with Solak as far as just postponing this until next year. And if he still doesn't have employees, then we can address the issue now. But, because it, I mean, with industrial buildings the size, bills them total, I mean, just to find a willing occupant is a chore and a hassle. And if the taxes are gonna continue to be paid at the current rate, and again, the counsel has the ability to clawback next year with just the land postponed and assuming that, because it seems like he's got good talent.
I appreciate that you came up here tonight. Did you have something, Councilman Morrissey?
Yeah, I just wanna agree with my colleagues here, but I think we should get it running here for the sake of getting things going.
If that's what you guys want to do, I'm fine with that. Is that what you were gonna say, Councilman Sizer, I really do?
Yeah, I was just gonna agree with everybody. I think that we've been versatile with rental property landlords in the past, where we may have shown much less of the way of good faith efforts, and we've gotten completely railroaded by someone in one instance in particular, and it took us years to resolve that. But, I think that it's my understanding, even from what the city staff is saying, that this man is making an effort, he's technically in contractual violation, but those were extraordinary years, COVID and. I, I don't see this as comparable to previous cases.
Okay, Councilman Sharp?
I'm gonna be in favor of what they're saying, but trust me, if we come back here next year, I'm still here. And I'll be looking at you. But I, I'm gonna give you that break because of COVID, I think we should.
All right, does anybody else have anything else to add so we can get moved along? Then we're just gonna take no action on the item. Thank you for making a show up here tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Homelbeck. We'll move on to item D, resolution to revoke obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate three dash fourteen dash zero zero four, Broad Street Downtown Market. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor, now this is a little bit different, this is OPA, which does not have a clawback clause, but this is something that we've had numerous issues with actually collecting the taxes, which are part of the agreement that they will pay the taxes, and they are outstanding about seventy-two hundred dollars in taxes. And it was brought forth by the city treasurer, I don't see him still here, but he actually went, has gone out of his way for many years to get done to pay their taxes by going and seeing them numerous times, and they would still pay late. This time, he's been to them three times, and they still haven't paid their taxes, which they're in. Yes, summer twenty-two taxes. That being said, they only have two years left on the OPA, so we are recommending that it be revoked because the track record has gone on for a number of years.
Any questions for Dave? Motion to. Revote the OPA? Motion up the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Morrissey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? thirteen. Unanimous one abstention. Okay, we'll move into item E, Hillsdale Justice Project Angland Division.
Kim, are you still back there? Can you come up on this line?
Could you just explain?
Sure. So, if you're familiar with the Justice Project building downtown here at the Liberty Hall, it's, there's two sections to the building, there's a one-story section where they hold their meetings, and then there's a two-story section. That portion of the building had a fire back in, I think it was the mid-nineties, that was never fully repaired. So, it's sat empty for a number of years. They have a potential buyer for that two-story section, so they're asking to split the property to allow them to sell that portion of the building to a suffered owner.
Okay, very good, any questions for Kim? Go ahead. No, I, I think it's great, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, there's no issues with zoning with the downtown, there's no soundbag requirements or anything, so. I don't see any reason for it not to be approved.
Thank you, Kim. Entertaining motion to approve the land division. Motion up the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Morrissey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now, we need to set a public hearing for obsolete property rehabilitation exemption for JB Office Building. When is the date going to be for, for the public hearings?
I believe it's at the, it is at the meeting.
So, it'll be at the next meeting, October seventeenth?
Correct.
An entertaining motion to set a public hearing for obsolete property rehabilitation exemption for JB Office Building for October seventeenth. Motion on the floor from Councilman Ryder, seconded by Councilman Soha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll have a public hearing at our next meeting. All right, we are done with new business, let's move into proclamations, we have a few of them tonight. The first one is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I'm sorry, I know it's been a long meeting, guys, but I read proclamations because I think they're important. And I'm sorry, I know it's been a long meeting, guys, but I read proclamations because I think they're important. But as you guys know, I'm a quick reader, so. Whereas domestic violence perpetrators intentionally use a pattern of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and/or economic coercion and abuse to control their intimate partners, violating their dignity, security, and both psychological and physical well-being. And whereas domestic violence perpetrators cause significant and long-lasting trauma to countless individuals and families, and whereas violence against women is the seed to so many other forms of violence, and a shift in our conversation must happen because violence against women continues to have devastating effects on entire communities, including our own. And whereas when children are involved, domestic violence perpetrators' choices tend to be violent and abusive, and parenting classes that often have devastating deforestation adverse impacts on the safety and well-being of children, and they're not offending parents. And whereas in twenty twenty-one, Michigan State Police Incident Crime Report indicated there were forty-two thousand two hundred and forty-one domestic violence offenses committed by current and former intimate partners reported to Michigan law enforcement during the year. And whereas the city of Hillsdale is committed to holding domestic violence perpetrators accountable, employing interventions to reduce the risk and harm all victims, as well as providing victims the resources and support they deserve to enhance their safety well-being. Whereas domestic harmony is to protect, shelter, and empower people impacted by domestic violence. Domestic harmony is the only agency in providing emergency shelter, free and confidential advocacy to survivors twenty-four seven, three sixty-five in Hillsdale County. And whereas effective domestic violence prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human services agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an important opportunity to learn more about domestic violence and to demonstrate support for the organization and individuals who engage in advocacy, provide services, and offer assistance to victims. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is an opportunity to recognize the strength and courage of those currently surviving abuse, as well as to honor those who are murdered or harmed at the hands of their current or former partners. Now therefore, I, Adam Stockford, Mayor of the City of Hillsdale, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-two as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Hillsdale. The next one is Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, U.S. President Ronald Reagan declared October as a month to recognize the unique grief of bereaved parents in an effort to demonstrate support to the many families who have suffered such a tragic loss. Whereas pregnancy and infant loss is such a common occurrence, one that is usually not recognized and rarely acknowledged. Whereas one, four women will lose a baby during pregnancy, delivery, or infancy. Whereas the devastating tragedy often occurs suddenly without warning as a result of miscarriage, stillbirth, preterm birth, sudden infant death syndrome, accident, or other causes or complications. And whereas increased awareness of the causes and impacts surrounding pregnancy and infant loss may lead to greater understanding, support, and resources in communities across the United States. Whereas in two thousand and two, the fifteenth day of October Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day campaign began is recognized in parts of the United States and in many other jurisdictions around the world as a day of remembrance and awareness of pregnancy and infant loss, where many participate in the international wave of light by lighting a candle at seven P.M. local time to honor all babies gone too soon. And whereas on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, the Hillsdale Hospital will hold their fifteenth annual Remembrance Walk at Allen Memorial, Memorial Park, Broadbees Lake, at one P.M. for parents and families to remember the lives gone too soon. And whereas we recognize and acknowledge the unique grief of bereaved parents of pregnancy and infant loss. And whereas we demonstrate our support for the many families affected by such loss, now therefore, I, Adam Elstockford, Mayor of the City of Hillsdale, Michigan, do hereby proclaim October fifteenth, twenty twenty-two as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day in the City of Hillsdale, and encourage parents, caregivers, and all residents to become educated and opportunities to prevent pregnancy and infant loss and support bereaved families when prevention is not possible. And the last one is Recognizing Public Power Week. That's October second through to October eighth. Whereas the City of Hillsdale places high value on the benefit of local control of utility services and therefore operates a community-owned, not-for-profit electric utility. Whereas because we are customers and owners of board public utilities and have a direct say in utility and operations and policies, whereas Hillsdale Board of Public Utilities provides our home businesses, farms, social service, and local government agencies with safe, reliable, and efficient electricity and employ sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at not-for-profit rates. Whereas the Hillsdale Board of Public Utilities is a valuable community asset that contributes to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, economic development, and safety awareness. Whereas Hillsdale Board of Public Utilities is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many consumer protections and continues to make our community a better place to live and work and contributes to a sustainable environment. Now therefore, be it resolved that Hillsdale Board of Public Utilities will continue to work to bring safe, reliable electricity to community homes and businesses, just as it has since eighteen ninety-two, the year when the utility was created, to serve all citizens of the City of Hillsdale. And be it further resolved that the week of October second through eighth be designated Public Power Week to recognize Hillsdale Board of Public Utilities for its contributions to the community and to educate customers, owners, policymakers, and employees on the benefits of public power. Be it further resolved that our community join hands with more than two thousand other public power systems in the United States in the celebration of public power, which is best for consumers, business, and community, and the nation. Now therefore, I, Adam Elstockford, Mayor of the City of Hillsdale, do recognize the week of October second through October eighth as Public Power Week, a week-long celebration of Hillsdale Board of Utilities' year-round service to the City of Hillsdale. Alrighty, very good. We've got two appointments tonight. They're both to the tip of the board. One is an appointment, one's a reappointment. And Mike Clark is here, and Felicia Finch, who owns Hillsdale Brewery, is the other one. You guys are both aware of both of the candidates. Do you have a motion to do both appointments or some? Motion on the floor from Councilman Brighter, seconded by Councilwoman Brat. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we'll move into general public comment. During this time, the podium will be open. Please leave your comments for three minutes. Please limit your trips to one in the podium, and during this time, you can speak on anything your hearts so desires. Podium's not open.
Penny Swan, Ward for Bruce. Dave, everybody, the sound system rocks. I can't wait till the air conditioning kicks on. We can see that, oh, well, it works.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Penny. Any more public comment?
Thank you once again for your time. I just wanted to, I don't know if there's anything that can be done about it, but I think my situation is fairly unique with the, the special assessments in terms of not just the one lot, but I have a shared private park that I co-own with two of my neighbors, and then another lot on the other side of that, so it can't be sort of easily drawn altogether. But because of that, I'm gonna have to pay currently eight thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars in special assessment, and that hurts. And so I, I think that's a fairly unique case. I don't know if there's anything that can be done about that, or if you know anyone that wants to buy into lots. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Any more public comment? Seeing none, we will close the podium, move into City Manager's Board. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to address a couple of things. As I mentioned earlier, we are specifically aware Ian's situation. We can discuss that further as a staff to see if there's a way to address that and bring it forward to the appropriate council committee to bring back. Can be adjusted when we bring back the, the final costs and whatnot related to the special assessment district faculty. Is that correct, Tom? So we do have some time to address this, to see if there's any plausible alternative.
Yes, because you'll get this proposed assessment call in the amounts of investigating group, just for the process.
So we do have an option there. We will take a look at it, discuss it, and speak with the residents and see if we can come up with a solution. In regards to the sound system, it's also important to mention that this also has the components for the hearing impaired. So if someone is hearing impaired, we have the equipment so that it will scream into their hearing aids or their hearing devices, so they just need to request that, and we'll make sure we got a signage for that notifying residents when they come in. But I think we're very pleased with, you know, the sound quality of Playford Music and Mr. Playford. I think he did a fine job for us. Lastly, just kind of a report that on October first was the third train visit to the community, and my understanding that went over very well again. Again, we tried to tweak and improve it, but we've got some dedicated volunteers in the community that are really putting our best foot forward. Felicia, Heather, Trishka, Stu Cho, Kelly LaPresto, and. From, from the. Who was running the.
Gianna.
Four CIO enterprises, the.
Brand?
Not Brand, but Gianna. Yes, so you'd have, yes, the Dawn. I kept thinking something else away. Gianna from the Dawn, helping those four ladies were very crucial to this, as well as many other volunteers from Rotary and other places within the community. So hopefully we see that occur for years to come. So that's all I had, Mayor.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions for Dave? Seeing none, we'll move on to council comment. Councilman Stutel?
Yeah, I have two questions for Dave. One, one is, Helen and I were out Saturday talking about Prop three, which is neighborage, and concern came up on the corner of Manning and South Street, right by Bailey. There's no stop, there's never been a stop sign there, but there's this resident's concern about the traffic. Take a look at it, especially during school. They said there's no crossing guard either, so that might be the easiest fix. And the other question I had was, you know, you alluded to the property taxes. We get forty-two percent of us goes to the county, and we just finished the fair. Is there a bill, I mean, we're all fighting for every nickel we can get. So we support the fair as far as city police and fire department and whatnot. Do we build a county back for that? If not, should we? I mean, I don't wanna destroy any partnership, but.
The fair's owned by the Hillsdale County Agricultural Society.
Well, we supply the police and fire, right?
Yes, we do.
I mean, is there a, do we build any way for that, or is that a? We do not. Should we? That's a question for council.
Well, that's a good question.
It's a good question, yes.
I mean.
See, in the past, they, like, given the entire city, fair passes, just some history.
Right.
But, you know, with things tightening for everyone.
Right, and that's what we did, it tightened for them too, so we didn't see those fair passes. I mean, and other things are cutting back down as well.
Right.
And I'm just saying, well, we have to do the same thing in time to make sure that we're protecting our forty-two percent. I'm not saying it's a hundred percent though, but maybe there's a split cost, something we should probably talk about. What does that cost the city to do, and then just go from there?
That's something we definitely should look into, so everyone knows what that cost is.
Yeah, what that cost is.
That would be Public Safety.
Public Services.
Public Services United? Okay, that's a good, that's a good point, Councilman Stutel. Let's take a look at that. Any more council comment? Councilman Zeiser?
I guess I'll just quickly say that that was one of the most difficult meetings or votes that I've ever had in my tenure on council. The silver lining is that that tenure on council is soon to end, as I've not sought reelection. I, I do believe things sort of turn out how they're meant to, so hopefully someone with more vision than myself will eventually fill in the seat, because I do believe when we have to cast things out of people, we fail. But that said, I operated out of the legitimate belief that we really would have waited another twenty, thirty years to fix those roads. So we did not have many great alternatives. Anything that could be messed up can be fixed, so if there is some, some future vision, we can claw our way out of this. And I, I do live on Glendale, so I would never vote for something that I wouldn't subject myself to.
Well, that would break you, that, Councilman Zeiser.
And when I.
Could have abstained, because you live there.
When I leave my house, my wife says, make sure that you don't do or say anything that will shame our family or make it so that you can't show your face in public. And I think I came a damn sight close tonight, but I don't think I had any good choices. And I do wanna spend, send special greetings to my wife. It was our thirteenth anniversary today.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you.
So it was Councilman Zeiser and Amber's thirteenth anniversary, and it was Councilman Sharp's wife's birthday.
Happy birthday, Michelle.
Hanging up out, out here until ten o'clock at night.
We have to celebrate, Bruce.
Yeah, get some birthday presents for her.
Happy anniversary, Bill.
Thank you, happy, 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 Michelle.
It's been a very interesting last week, especially meeting a lot of my constituents again, getting to know all, someone who never met me before and I couldn't, or they forgot who I was. Very difficult decision, but walking up there and hearing what they had to say, I believe it was the right thing to do. But at the time, it is like I told, it couldn't be any worse. Inflation, the economy, everything is going on, but I don't wanna see another Marion Street, and that, it's getting close to it. I mean, it was getting that close. So, thank you, council, for doing what had to be done. And I understand where no votes came from. I understand that, dude, and I respect you on that. But we did the right thing. It's just ouch, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sharp. Any more council comment? Councilman Brighter?
Yeah, so as a Fair Board member, we did provide the police and fire with week-long passes, and we provided BPU with passes, I believe, out of them. So we do give back in that way for services, but totally get it if you guys wanna look at charging. We'll just do away with the passes and just go to the regular, like that, so I'm just.
Dave, we should call this meeting, call it before this starts to get a little more, a little more personal with the Box and Fair Board. They've been knocking people over this year, so.
Yeah, sorry you guys didn't get your passes. I know it hurts.
At least you didn't get us out of the fair, Ray.
We could always.
At least you didn't banish us.
We could always volunteer though on Monday nights, and I'd be more than happy to give you a, a pass for a week long if you wanna come down and help out volunteer down there.
I spent enough money down there, so.
I wonder if garbage bag, that was cool.
We'll try to do it during.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting's adjourned.